We have Councilwoman Baron of District Seven. Um, we also have Geo Price from our zoning office. Um, we have the developers on that are seeking their zoning request. And we also have our support team on, including I T and P I O. Um, as well as our clerk's office. So I want to thank them all for their support in this effort as well. Uh, tonight's uh, community input um, is being received virtually. Um, but in multiple facets. Uh, participants are able to send their questions to uh, Town Hall, and that's one word, Town Hall at Richland County S C dot gov. Or you can do that by calling eight zero three seven six six five six seven eight. And I'll say that one more time. You can send your questions to Town Hall, one word, at Richland County S C dot gov. Or you can do that by calling eight zero three seven six six five six seven eight. All right, you can do those either by email or by phone, but we ask you to not do both of those. So do one or the other, so we can make sure that we can get to all the, the questions that the public has. Um, tonight's conversation will focus on four rezoning requests. And those are as follows. Ninety-two hundred Wilson Boulevard. One thousand or ten thousand thirteen Wilson Boulevard. Wilson Boulevard near I seventy-seven. And twenty-six thirty Clemson Road. In order to ensure that tonight's discussion runs effective and efficiently. We have established just a few guidelines to follow with tonight's meeting. Um, in order to make sure that we are able to get to all the questions in a timely manner. We are asking that the questions that are uh, that are asked today refer directly to those rezoning requests. So for the properties that I just mentioned, we're asking that those questions relate specifically to those items. Okay, um, we do recognize that there are other questions and concerns that you may have. Uh, related to roads, sidewalks, school districts and other things. Those are important issues and we do want to make sure that we document and keep track of those.
Yeah.
But for tonight's discussion.
I see.
Make sure that we are able to directly address um, the questions around the rezonings. Um, that are going to be addressed by our developers shortly. Okay, as again I mentioned, if you do have other questions or concerns, please feel free to share those with us via email. And phone as we do want to make sure that we have those documented as well. Okay, we do also ask. Um, just some housekeeping items as well. We do ask that if you um, if you are not uh, speaking in terms of uh, our developers on. We'll please ask that you keep your microphones muted out of respective others that would be talking currently. Um, and our audience, again, once we've had the opportunity to go through um, our developer presentations. Um, if there are uh, questions that you have, there will be an opportunity to address those questions then. We ask that you be mindful of those speaking. Um, and please make sure that your questions that you have um, are easily understandable and to the point. So that we can make sure between um, Geo Price from our zoning office, Councilwoman Baron and developers. That we'll be able to get to those questions and get those answers for you. Um, if for some reason we're unable to get to that, to get an answer to that question uh, tonight, we'll be sure to follow up with you directly on that as well. Um, and now I'm going to turn it over to Councilwoman Baron for some opening remarks.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you, Bryant. Uh, and um, off the top, I want to thank our staff uh, for putting together this uh, virtual town hall for us. Uh, it is important that as we talk about development, not only in District Seven, but in Richland County. That I believe that our constituents and the citizens of Richland County have an opportunity. To hear firsthand from uh, the developers, the property owners, those individuals, those applicants. Who are proposing and who have put an application in for rezoning. And you may say, Councilwoman Baron, you know, there are opportunities through public hearings. And there, and you're absolutely correct. There are many opportunities through public hearings during the planning commission meeting. As well as in, in the zoning uh, meetings. But what I found is two minutes is not a lot of time um, for a developer to be able to uh, give their ideas and their thoughts about their proposal. As well as um, the citizens having an opportunity. So this is something that I started when I first took office and I vowed to continue to do this. Prior to my taking a vote on any rezoning um, that comes before council. So tonight, as Bryant has mentioned, we have several um, applicants who have made uh, application. A couple of them have been deferred for our, for several meetings. Uh, just because I felt it important enough to, to live by uh, the word that I presented. And that is let you hear, to let you hear from them. And so as we do this tonight, um, keep in mind that um, I want you to ask your questions. Uh, but please note that there's still um, ordinances and laws that we still have to abide by. Uh, as we move forward rezoning. And we know that District Seven is growing very fast. And as it's growing very fast, we want to be mindful of the growth. We want to be smart about the growth. We want to be conscious about the growth. Uh, but we do know that there is the obvious. Growth is here. It's present. And so whereas I've talked to many of you and you'll say, well, I don't, we're good. We want to stay rural. Well, here's the deal. I want you to know. Um, it's not rural. District Seven is not rural anymore. Um, I think the new word that we, we've been coined as is, we are the suburbs um, uh, of Richland County. And so as we are that, we want to really, again, the word of the day is being mindful. We want to be mindful about our growth. We want to be smart about our growth. So I'm going to turn it back over to Bryant. Um. The, so as he introduces our developers, uh, Bryant, I know that we said five minutes. Let's try to stay within that five to seven minute window to give them a little bit of time. Um, I think the clerk's office is going to uh, make sure that we stay on target. Uh, I would ask the developers to please um, stay to that time period. Because we do want to have an opportunity to engage um, with those who are logged on. Those of you who are logged on, as you ask your questions, uh, be real specific. Because we have many of them. So we'll ask that if you can remember the address. Or at least the numbers of the address to put that in your question. So we'll know who to reference uh, the question to. But please ma'am, please sir, ask us the questions just like you would if we were at, you know, at one of the community parts when we've done this before. We want to have a fulling, uh, we want to have an engaging conversation, little bit different. But um, I know that um, it's going to be great and it's going to be helpful for us as we move forward. Uh, Bryant, back to you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Baron. Um, and so now we're going to go ahead and move into that uh, developer portion. Um, this will be an opportunity for our developers to explain the details regarding um, their request. Um, as Councilwoman Baron just mentioned, um, if our developers would stick to about five to seven minutes. We want to make sure we have allotted time for you to answer questions that you have, uh, questions that the public actually has um, regarding uh, those efforts. Um, and so first up, we're going to start with um, with ninety-two hundred Wilson Boulevard. Um, and I believe we have Ms. Jenny Reyes online. And um, if we do, Ms. Reyes, you can go ahead and unmute and I'll turn the floor over to you.
Hello. Can you all hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. One minute, I'm going to share my screen if that's. Okay, my name is Jenny Reyes and I just wanted to introduce myself and present the rezoning request for ninety-two hundred Wilson Boulevard. This is approximately eight acres in size and I'm requesting for it to be rezoned from rural to neighborhood commercial. And currently, we don't have any concrete plans to present that I can share with you what the neighborhood commercial zoning would allow for in the future. Um. Obviously, the permitted uses are examples such as an event venue, pharmacy, church, or with the event venue which is currently there, pharmacy, church or recreational center. Um. It's located in a district designed to be located within or adjacent to residential neighborhoods where large commercial uses are um, inappropriate, but where small neighborhood oriented businesses are useful and desired. Um. Like I said, there's currently no specific plan, but we would like to have the option to build something that would supplement the existing neighborhood community. Um, we believe our ideas would help support um, the suggestions previously mentioned by the county planning department and the existing future maps and comprehensive plans. Right now, there's a residence and event space on the property. The rezoning would allow for things like pharmacy, fire station, church, recreation center as mentioned. Um. These are just some pictures and things that are currently on the property. This is the site that we are requesting to be rezoned, the eight acres and um, you can see what it's surrounded by here. Um. And also the county has highlighted that this is a great place for the neighborhood commercial zoning and we want to be able to bring it to the area in the near future. Um, that's pretty much all I have. Just kind of wanted to present a very high level overview of what we have in mind.
All right, Ms. Reyes, if um, if you don't have anything else, we will um, we'll move on to the next presenter. And then um, if you would just stick around for us um, uh, in case we have any questions from the public.
Absolutely. Thank you.
No problem. Thank you. Um. And so for our next presenter, um. We are going to have uh, twenty-six thirty Clemson Road. Um. And that is um, Ms. Samantha Kozlowski. So Ms. Kozlowski, if you um, uh, would like, you can go ahead and unmute. And um, you've got about five to seven minutes.
Hello, everyone. Um, my name is Samantha Kozlowski. I am a development manager with E fourteen Development. I will go ahead and share my screen. Um, which will give you an overview of our site plan that we are proposing for two-six-three-zero Clemson Road. Um, I can pull up some elevation so you can get a little bit better of an idea of what the uses we're proposing are. But basically, this use shown here near Clemson Road is a drive-through coffee shop. Um, and then the use situated a bit further back from the road, that will be a childcare facility. So the childcare facility in size will be just under twelve thousand square feet. And as you can see, um, these both, both of these uses are within the same parcel here. So there will be cross-access, cross-parking um, and pretty good flow throughout the site. Um, obviously you can see there's the whole drive-through area and then a great allotment of parking. So we have some separate spots, some that are dedicated to the drive-through use. And others that are dedicated for the childcare facility as well. So this concept plan is a little bit preliminary. Um, this was the one that we submitted for the map amendment. So there will be probably some revisions to it. Obviously, this isn't showing a ton of detail on our playground area. Usually, this is separated into three different sections. So it has age-appropriate equipment for uh, three different age groups of kids. And the childcare tenant will operate for children six weeks to six years of age. So that's just kind of what the preliminary concept plan is showing our parcel. That's carved out there and kind of the two users that we're proposing. Um, this next image here would be a prototype rendering of the coffee shop. As you can see here, the tenant is Clutch Coffee. They are developing within South Carolina and North Carolina mainly right now. So they've gauged a lot of interest in South Carolina and within your municipality specifically. So that's just kind of an overview of what they're building will look like as you can see here. Kind of some nice neutral colors. Um, there's a little bit of bronze on the awning and then some brick and stone mashup to kind of match well. All of the utility equipment will be blocked and screened by a metal fence shown here. And that's an idea of what that will look like. So again, that may change once we review our architectural plans and have everything submitted for the site plan review, but this is kind of what we submitted for the initial submittal. The next prototype elevation that we have is for the childcare facility. So it kind of has a same, a similar color scheme, if you will. So kind of some neutral colors. Um, we have a stone wrap around the bottom of the building. And then there's some lap siding which typically will be constructed of a James Hardy vinyl side, or a James Hardy Hardy plank siding instead of that material shown there. But this is just kind of, again, a prototype mock-up of what that building might look like. And I think that's all I have, but again, uh, happy to answer any questions when it's my time. Thank you.
Thank you, Samantha. We appreciate you sharing that information with us and, and I appreciate you willing to hold as well as we may have some additional questions. Um, we will now move on to uh, Wilson Boulevard um, near I seventy-seven. Um, and we have um, Bill listed. I don't see Bill, so there may be somebody else here that would be speaking specifically to that. Um, and so um, I will go ahead and turn the floor over to that representative now.
Um, hey, Mr. Davis, this is Craig Waits. I will be handling the uh, the presentation for Bill. Um, and thank y'all for allowing me to join y'all this evening. Um, the property that we are uh, subject to the rezoning and it's actually not a rezoning, but we're asking for an amendment to the original pud. Um, and I'll bring my uh, the uh, exhibit for the uh, pud up here. Um. This pud, and I hope y'all can, you can see it. Um, this pud is in the corner, in the southwest corner of um, I seventy-seven and Wilson Boulevard in the Blythewood area. Uh, the pud was actually established in two thousand and five and uh, it was established as a mixed-use pud. And um, if you, if you look on the exhibit, and this is actually the exhibit of the pud, which was the easiest way to, to uh, to, to share the information. But uh, it consisted of a, of a single-family residential area, a multifamily residential area, and then a commercial and industrial use area. Um, the uh, the, 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 the pud itself was limited.
Excuse me, Mr. Waits.
Yes.
Are, are we supposed to be seeing something?
Uh, you should be.
We are not.
You are not. Okay, hang on a second. Let's see here.
If you hit down the, yeah.
Can you hear, you see now?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
I'm sorry. Thank you for catching that. Uh, so this is the exhibit to the pud, um, the, the land that was subject to the pud. Um. As you will see, there's a single-family residential area, multifamily residential area, and then also a uh, commercial area. The uh, the original pud actually allowed for um, uh, three hundred and forty-two si- uh, single-family residential units. Uh, five hundred and fifty-eight multifamily units. And then a variety of, of uh, uses in the commercial and industrial areas. Um, fast forward uh, from two thousand and five to today. And um, the single-family residential area has actually been built out and I'm, I'll show you, show you, um. Let's see if you, if you can see here. Um. It has been built, built out, uh, fully built out. And um, it was actually um, built out with um, uh, two hundred and eighty-six units as opposed to the three hundred and forty-two. Um, likewise, the multifamily, which was approved for uh, five hundred and fifty-eight units, was actually only built out for three hundred and eighty-four units. And so real, in reality, there was about uh, about two hundred and thirty units that were allocated to this pud that have not been constructed. And um, the, we, clearly we've had success in those two areas of the pud. However, the commercial and industrial area, which is the, the absolute hard corner of the, of the area of the, of the land tract that uh, borders Wilson Boulevard and I seventy-seven, has had very low activity. And um, there's a couple of reasons for that. We do have a seven-eleven that's under construction now, but the remaining fifty-five acres remains vacant. And um, the, the commercial part of it really was affected by the two thousand and eight recession that carried through two thousand and thirteen. And during that time, as you all know, uh, it was kind of the evolution of e-commerce. And so going forward, we don't, we don't expect that we're going to have the demand for bricks and mortar that will ultimately um, you know, uh, absorb fifty-five acres. Likewise, the county, as you all know, purchased the um, that has the fifteen hundred acres up uh, community road for its new industrial park. And so any industrial users are likely to go to that particular park, which I know the county hopes for as well. And so what we're asking on the pud is pretty, pretty, the pud is really pretty simple. Um, we would like to take that excess unit capacity that was never built, which amounts to about two hundred and thirty units. And in, 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 place those allocated units into the commercial area. And then add about seventy units to it so that we could have a first-class uh, multifamily complex there. Um, again, we think that that would be a, 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 a ideal use for the property. We obviously already have one on, on site, but this particular area of the pud does not allow for the multifamily use. You have to have a commercial or industrial application there. And so we are simply asking that uh, those, those two hundred and thirty units that were never built be transitioned onto this portion of the, of the, of the pud. And then add thirty, excuse me, add seventy units to it for a total of three hundred uh, available units to do a multifamily uh, project on this portion of the property.
All right, Mr. Waits, is there anything else that you wanted to add?
Uh, I think I'm, I'm, I'm think I'm done. Happy to answer any questions.
All right, sir. If you would just, just stick around with us, um, we'll finish our last um, presentation and then we'll uh, we'll be opening up for questions. All right, and um, and now we'll move forward to our last um, uh, developer presentation. And that will be for one zero zero one three Wilson Boulevard. Um, and I do believe, I saw earlier, I believe we had Mr. Ben Green on. So Mr. Green, I will turn it over to you, sir.
Hi, good evening. Thank you, everybody. I'm on and I also have Kevin Williams, the engineer, who put his heart, mind, soul to the project. I think it'd be best in the time slot we have to allow uh, Kevin to present, at least for, for a first part of the five minutes. Is that okay?
Yes, sir, that's fine.
Kevin? Could you unmute Kevin?
Mr. Williams, are you there, sir? It seems he's there, Mr. Green, but uh, I'm not sure if he's having some, okay, he's sharing screen now.
Is Kevin unmuted?
He is.
Mr. Green, he may be having some technical issues. I can see that the, the, I can see the presentation on the screen, but he may be having some other uh, technical issues.
So let me, let me jump in then over here. Okay, what we have over here is a fifty-acre tract that we intentionally, we initially thought of developing as a multifamily tract. Um, that would make, make most sense from economic standpoint. But then taking a further look into the surrounding area. Uh, we felt that the best fit for the community would be to bring in a townhome product. Which doesn't exist in the proximity of the area. Uh, the benefits over multifamily, uh, having townhomes of multifamilies, multifamily tends to bring in transient renters. Uh, that come and go. However, townhomes give a pathway for homeowners who can't yet have the luxury of buying single-family homes. But yet hard-working individuals who want to build the community and be part of the community, make a commitment to Blythewood. This would give them the access to make the community a better place. It's a great place as it is, but to add to the community. Now, we took a lot of care into designing this parcel. This parcel is fifty acres large. However, the disturbed area, meaning where the houses are and the roads are, is only fifteen acres. That's just a third of the entire parcel with a lot of green space protecting the surroundings. And I see Kevin is, is zooming in on the screen. Uh, the request is just for a hundred and eighty-eight units. When I say just is because there seems to have been a misunderstanding in previous uh, reports indicating that we're looking to do a hundred and seven hundred and ninety-nine units. And that, that was a it's incorrect. We're only looking to do a hundred and eighty-eight units. Uh, the zoning designation we're requesting, which a current, exists that would best fit, is R M M D. Which allows for more, but we are not intending to do more than a hundred and eighty-eight as we put together on this site plan. Um, we know that this parcel is right across the street from the economic district. So this use would bode very well to support the economic district with employee, employees or people that benefit the district living nearby. We think this could be a very good fit for the development of Wilson Boulevard and for Blythewood as a whole. At this time, we haven't yet done any renderings. The project isn't that far ahead yet. But this layout, as you see, is designed with multi, two egresses onto Wilson Boulevard to alleviate any traffic. The tra, the total unit count is a, not that much. In other words, it could very easily be absorbed onto Wilson Boulevard. And we feel that the, the greenery, the open space is a very big factor over here, showing that we're not looking to overburden the community. We're trying to do a service to the community. We're just trying to make the project economically feasible. And it's at this unit count that we can make a work and be a benefit to the community.
Thank you, Mr. Green. Did you have anything else that you wanted to add?
Hey. I, I, I guess one more slide point is that there's been talks about this whole area becoming R three. And I just wanted to mention, if it were to, will become R three, then this would allow for six units per acre, which would mean three hundred units. We're coming in and asking for even way less than that, but three-point-seven units per acre where the R three allows six units per acre. So what we're trying to convey is that even with taking the comprehensive future use plan in mind, we still fall very short. Very far behind the maximum potential, maximum potential. In, uh, with intention just to do what we can to support the growth, but not uh, be overburdening on the surrounding areas. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Green. We appreciate that. Um, and so at this time, we have concluded our four um, developer presentations. Um, and in a couple of minutes, we are going to get into our, our, our question-answer session. Um, before we did that, I wanted to um, turn it back over to Councilwoman Baron, just in case there were a couple of um, questions, any issues that you wanted to um, discuss prior to um, opening it up to our residents.
Thank you, Bryant, and thank you to all of our developers and uh, presenters today. Um, I, I want to start the conversation here. And by making this statement, I had a meeting with uh, Senator John Scott last week to discuss Wilson Boulevard in detail. Um, and that is, whereas I live right off of Wilson Boulevard, um. It, we're grateful and thankful that it has been resurfaced. Uh, and as it has been resurfaced, i- it's looking good. But there is still some concerns, just as a, as a citizen, as a resident um, that I have. And that is um, our traffic that we have there. Um, and traffic is, is normal. We, in a growing city, we know traffic is normal. Um, but I did speak to him and so I will be submitting a formal request uh, to uh, the Richland County delegation to look at the traffic as it relates to specifically, specifically to Wilson Boulevard. And I, and I will be making a request for them to um, go to S C D O T and request that we get an updated traffic study for Wilson Boulevard. This is um, because I, I think the last one um, that was formally done was around two thousand and ten, two thousand and twelve. Um, a lot's taken place since then. Um, and so as we look at considering um, more housing and we know that we, i- it's, it's a And so as we look at considering more housing, and we know that it's a necessity, and as we look at more housing, we also want to be mindful of is that infrastructure that we've talked about in many of our town hall meetings, can we take care of that upfront? Is this something that we can put into play from a statewide and get the state to make a commitment on our behalf to assess our roads and look at a formal traffic study? Also, I'm requesting an environmental study to be done for this area as well. And it's a request. I feel comfortable, definitely, that Senator Scott's going to do his part to support it getting done. But I want you, each one of you who are logged on, who all, we've had this conversation over and over again, the traffic, the traffic, the traffic. So we do need to be mindful, and as we are mindful about this traffic, I've taken the necessary steps to go ahead and to request those items to be presented by our legislators and so that they can begin work there. So I wanted to start the conversation there because I know that there are going to be conversations, questions pertaining to traffic studies, pertaining to environmental studies. And so I don't think that either one of our developers who are on today have already done a traffic study, a recent traffic study. I don't think that they've done an environmental study. And so because it is a concern of mine, it's one that I'm willing to put the effort forward and do it first. So, Brian, we're ready to go to the questions at this time.
Thank you, Councilwoman Barron. And as she just mentioned, as we're getting ready to get into that question-answer session, there are some questions that are similar to those. I do not want you to think that if I don't voice those now, that we are in any means skipping those. But as you heard her mention, though, those two things she is working on then, so do want to be mindful of that as those questions are being submitted. So to start us off, the first question I have is is regarding an adjacent property. So this is asking, is ninety-one thirty-six Wilson Boulevard included in the plans for developing ninety-two hundred Wilson? Mr. Price, you may be able to answer that one for us.
That property is not a part of this remapping request, nor is it part of any future development that we have records of.
Thank you, Mr. Price. All right, our next question is asking, they would like to know if the Planning Commission could do more studies on infrastructure in rural areas of northeast Richland County. The rush zoning, overbuilding of quickly-sold properties is having a negative impact. And this is just asking, please not to rezone. This is asking about, we need to slow down and take a different, more efficient approach on the way to build. I know, Councilwoman Barron, you just mentioned, again, those traffic studies and looking at environmental studies. So I do believe that addresses a portion of that question. I didn't know if there's anything else you want to say to that point.
So I can't say it enough. And that is, that's why we're having this conversation today, is that we want to build with a future in mind. We want to build in a smart manner. And I do believe that, to some degree, there are some things that we can do from a county perspective. And as we work with our staff to make sure that we, the things that we can do, we will do. And then other things that we know that we can't do, then, of course, we either have to find ways to solve those challenges and to still be able to move forward with growth and continue to move forward with the different rezonings that come before us, while at the same time, I'll say this, I am very concerned about how fast we're growing, and I'll say how fast we're growing, maybe how fast we're being proposed to grow. And when I say proposed to grow, that is, we have five, four or five individuals here today, and they're all proposing to rezone their properties to build, whether it's townhomes or multifamily homes. And we know that that is a process, and it's something that takes years and years for them to get started and for them to be completed. But at the same time, as they are building and as they're growing, other people are still coming with their proposals as well. So I am being very deliberate about the conversations that I'm having about growth so that we can move forward in a very thoughtful and a very mindful way so that we don't necessarily interrupt what's currently happening on Wilson Boulevard, or currently happening on Clemson Road, or Farrow Road, or wherever you may be in District Seven. But we're putting things in place that makes sense for our entire district and at some point, perhaps our entire county.
Thank you, Councilwoman Barron. We're going to move on to our next questions, and this is regarding our one zero zero one three Wilson Boulevard. First question is asking if there will be any special permitting, SE or SR? And if so, for what use are they requesting this permit?
Mr. Davis, which case was this we're looking at?
This is number two-two-dash-zero-three-three.
Yes, okay. So I'm really unable to answer if there will be any special exceptions or special requirements, which would be the SE and the SR for this particular property. As proposed and stated by the applicant for what they're doing, a special exception nor special requirements would apply to this property. However, that zoning designation does allow for a multitude of uses, and some may require a special exception or a special requirement.
And I apologize, Mr. Williams. I think you had your hand up. Are you able to unmute? I didn't know if you had a comment that you wanted to add to that.
I'm sorry, can everyone hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Yes, okay. I apologize for the early problem there. No, I was just, the question came up about special permitting, and I think Mr. Price kind of touched on that. We don't foresee any special permitting on the site other than the standard permitting process for the infrastructure and the grading drainage and hydrology and everything associated with construction documents. There will be a need to have some sort of environmental investigation to locate all streams and wetlands, but other than that, we don't foresee any special permitting for the site.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Williams. There is a question. The next question is, is there any plan to widen Wilson Boulevard and decrease or decrease the speed limit? I know, Councilwoman Barron, you mentioned a traffic study, so there was, this question ended with with the two-lane, with it being the two-lane road and then, you know, fifty-five miles an hour. And so I know you did mention that, so I did want to go ahead and reaffirm to the person asking this question that this is something that you've already taken some proactive action on. And so they can have some faith in knowing that that will be worked out in the near future. The next question is, would this additional housing of so many more people exceed the traffic plan designed by DOT? Again, I'll defer that back to that current traffic study that you're doing then, where there will be some more clarity. And I'm sure at some point, you'll probably be providing that information to residents of District Seven as well. The last question is, this is a plot of land in swampy wetlands. Has the ecological impact of flood been taken into consideration? I think Mr. Williams just mentioned some of that that will likely be done in that. Did you have anything else that you wanted to add to that, Mr. Williams, at all, or is that correct?
Yeah, in terms of flooding, I mean, it's there will be, you know, during the design process, you know, it's part of our duties as engineers to study the natural drainage patterns of the site, so all of that will be addressed during the permitting process with our stormwater report as we design the detention basins. You know, again, if the residences or the neighbors that are on this Zoom call here don't recognize that we are mandated by the state not to allow runoff to leave more than what's already leaving today. So hopefully that answers that question.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. There are a few more additional questions regarding your rezoning. Another was for the environmental portion of this, which you just kind of touched on and asked how our environmental offices were involved in providing an environmental impact statement for the proposed development. And as you said, that effort will be taking place as you guys go through the process. The other question is, how will sewage work? Will you be tying into already existing sewage lines? And what additional stress will this create?
You mind if I share my screen again?
No, that's fine.
Okay. So it's a very good question. Can everybody see my screen now?
It's saying that you started. Okay, now we can.
Okay. Can everybody see what's going? Okay. So, good question. And this is something that I brought up in the Planning Commission meeting. The Belgrave property to the south has stubbed a sewer through these two lots, and there's an existing fifteen-foot easement. And our plan is to tap into that existing stub into this existing eight-inch sewer. So that's been analyzed just to make sure that we have gravity feed for the entire property, at least within the development portion of it that we're occupying.
Thank you, sir. All right, we'll move on to our next question, and that is for twenty-six thirty Clemson Road. And that question is, what are the protocols set in place to keep traffic from the coffee shop separate from the childcare center to protect children and families? Ms. Councilman Scott, I don't know if you had anything that you wanted to add or state regarding that.
Absolutely. So I'll explain a little bit about the childcare facility's operation. So they actually don't have a designated drop-off or pickup lane, like you might see at an elementary school or a middle school or something like that. They actually, the tenant requires the parent or guardian to park their vehicle and then escort the child in and out of the building. They have an electronic sign-in process that's monitored by an actual person inside. So they have to physically go in and check their kids in and out of the facility. So there isn't really a lot of high traffic going in and out aggressively. It's kind of more park, escort the child in, come back to the car, and then leave after that's been completed. So the drive-through traffic shouldn't really have any purpose to drive to the back of the childcare project. They're likely just going to go through the drive-through, potentially park their car for a couple of minutes, and then just kind of head out the exit, if you will. So we're hoping that there shouldn't be a lot of commingling of traffic here, but I think, as stated with the evidence of the traffic study, we'll be able to provide a bit more information on that on how actually the traffic flows will work for both tenants.
Thank you. And again, going through these questions, just want to remind everybody, we want to make sure that we, if we can, keep these focused on the actual rezoning efforts to make sure that we're able to get these questions answered for you with the developers online. The next question is regarding ninety-two hundred Wilson Boulevard. And this question is, does the developer know that ninety-two hundred Wilson Boulevard has a private residence only? She stated that it's used for events. Ms. Reyes, did you have anything that you wanted to add or answer with that question?
And the question was, do they currently have?
It's asking, does the developer know that ninety-two hundred Wilson Boulevard has a private residence only? And it's saying that she stated that it was used for events.
They have like a building for an event venue. It is currently not used for events, but that's what we're proposing it to be used for, possibly.
Thank you for the clarification, Ms. Reyes.
No problem.
All right, our next question, this is regarding any talk about children in Blackwood having an area to park and would provide a safe and adequate space for sporting events. I would share with the individual that sent this question, thank you so much for your concern for our youth in the community and making sure they have adequate places and space to play. But we do want to make sure that the questions that we're sending today are specifically related to those rezoning requests that were presented today, but this is definitely something that we do want to keep. This is also something that we would want to make sure that we pass along. So if there are further discussions, whether it's with the Recreation Commission or others, that that can be channeled to the right place so that those things could be shared with the appropriate parties. But thank you so much for your question there. And I do believe at this time, unless we have any additional questions now, I don't want to rush off that, but Mr. Weiss, it looks like you have your hand up. Sir, did you have something that you wanted to add?
Yes, I would just, I would like to point out, if you don't mind, with regards to the traffic and the environmental on the on the particular property that we're asking for amendment to the PUD. If I could share my screen real quick, just to share with you a little bit of the work that we have done. And there you go. I've got a Google Earth map up, if you all can see it.
Yes, sir.
Right here, where my cursor is, that's where the seven-eleven is currently under construction. And we worked with GEO on the planning of this. But regarding the request that we have for our commercial area, all of the access from, or excuse me, all of the traffic from this particular area is designed to go out of this lighted intersection right here. It's actually, we're developing, building a, right now, it's a three-lane boulevard that's coming in. And this was all part of a traffic study that was done by seven-eleven, and we ultimately entered into a memorandum of understanding with the Department of Transportation. You know, right now, this area, obviously, you do have five lanes here. And as part of the approval process for the encroachment permits from the DOT, the seven-eleven is actually putting in D-cell lanes, one coming south on Wilson Boulevard, and then also one going north as well as a left-hand turn lane. And so that was kind of phase one of the traffic program that the DOT asked us to consider. And then as part of that understanding too, is that as additional uses were added, then we would work with the DOT as to the other improvements that needed to be done. So one of the things that we were cognizant of is the fact that, yes, we're asking for some additional units to the PUD, but we're asking them in a location whereby the, where Wilson Boulevard is actually four lanes. And it is also about three hundred yards to the on-ramp to I-77. So the intent was obviously to move this as close to seventy-seven as possible so that the traffic generated by additional units would really be confined between here and the interstate and not migrate into the neighborhoods or further down Wilson Boulevard. and not, uh, migrate into the, to, to the neighborhoods or further down Wilson Boulevard. Um, and then the only other point, uh, that I would like to, to, to just suggest is that we do have a, uh, a wetland study. And so the wetlands areas have been delineated and approved by the Coral on this site, and we would certainly, uh, um, uh, adhere to any buffer standards that, uh, the county has with regards to a development off of those, uh, those wetland sites on those, those wetlands delineations.
Thank you for your clarification, Mr. Waits. We really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Bryant, I, if there are any other questions, um, from the residents, I do have a couple of questions, but I did, I wanted to hold my question to begin.
Currently don't have any other ones at this point, Ms. Barron, so, um, you can go ahead with your, with your questions.
Great. Uh, so, uh, as you all were, um, presenting, I did jot down a few questions. Uh, I had the opportunity to speak to each one of you somewhat at a high level conversation. And so I'm grateful for you all to, to join us today so that we can really kind of get a, a better understanding, uh, of things. So my, my question for, um, ninety-two hundred Wilson Boulevard, uh, Ms. Reyes, and, and that is, the current rezoning, you're asking for the rezoning for the house and the existing building that's on it. So the entire property, is that correct?
That is correct, yes ma'am.
And so it will no longer be resident, you, you will no longer be using it for residential use, but more so for your commercial use or the neighborhood. I think you, you have for neighborhood, um, planning.
Yes, ma'am. That's correct.
Thank you. And then, um, for the Clemson Road, uh, area. Uh, this, this part of Clemson Road always gives me just a little bit of heartburn. Um, and because that is so that everybody understands where it is, that's the area where the new chick, um, the new, um, KFC and East Bay Deli and the Dollar General all right in there. I, I got the right area, right Gio?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so it's all in that area, um, by Killian Green, um, for those of you who may be, um, from that area. So, um, and, and we've had lots of conversation about the traffic and how how it, uh, flows in that particular area. And so I am concerned, you made mention that, um, with the childcare facility, which I'm very familiar with, with the childcare industry and education. And so with that, um, you have Clutch Coffee that is being proposed. And I know all of this is tentative and you really don't even have to disclose it, but if you want to, we'll, we're, we're here to listen. Um, and that is, you have Clutch Coffee. Do you also have a, a proposal for a particular childcare center?
We do, actually. Yes, the tenant is Big Blue Marble Academy.
Okay.
And they've also shown enormous growth kind of throughout the southeast re- region. So they're developing at a very, very fast rate kind of throughout North Carolina, South Carolina, some very similar communities to Clutch Coffee.
Okay, okay. I, okay, that, which again, it, it does help tremendously. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
And then, um, for the property on on Wilson Boulevard directly behind seven eleven, that's Mr. Waits and Mr., um, Theus. Um, now, you all are proposing to do multifamily homes on your property and also requesting an amendment for, to add on the additional two hundred that was not used prior to?
Well, a- a- actually, we have, um, there, there were, uh, the, uh, let me give my notes real quick. There were, uh, three hundred and forty-two single-family units and five hundred and fifty-eight units that were approved in the original PUD. Um, so that amounts to what, uh, about nine hundred units total? Um, actually, the only, there, there were only, um, two hundred and eighty-six single-family and three hundred and eighty-four units. So roughly, there, there were six hundred and fifty that were developed. So there were two hundred and fifty roughly remaining units that were outstanding that were never developed. However, the commercial and industrial area of the PUD does not allow for any type of residential use. And so what we're simply asking is that, that the area of the PUD be allowed for residential use and we can put those, those two hundred and fifty units that were never developed on it. And then, yes ma'am, add fifty units to it to make three hundred total units, which is a standard size for a, uh, a typical multifamily project.
Okay, so you're with, with the PUD, we're taking those, those homes that were left over, add in additional fifty. And then what are we doing with the, um, with the commercial, not the commercial, the industrial portion? Is that's going to be rezoned as well?
I'm sorry, uh, I didn't catch that last.
Is that going to be rezoned as well?
Uh, no ma'am, we're just, we're simply asking for the, um, the, uh, the, the narrative of the PUD itself that's reported, just to reflect that it's, it's going to be, it's going to become a mixed-use area. All the existing, uh, uses that are currently allowed will still be allowed i- i- with, with the addition of multifamily being allowed.
Okay, so essentially, I just want to be real clear because it, I think you guys, your, your proposal was probably one of the most complex um, of, of the ones that we discussed tonight. So we, we're, we're talking about these, these homes, roughly about three hundred homes that are really going to be attached to, um, now, um, the industrial park, but it'll be a, I know it's still a PUD, it's still a PUD, but we're kind of doing a remix of it. It's a, so we got commercial, um, not commercial, we've got the residential being added to the industrial. Someone giving us a mixed use.
But a- a- and, and that, and that's the correct, is correct. And it's, it's actually probably will not be, um, it may be townhomes or a traditional apartment, uh, community. Um, is likely that the use that will ultimately end up there just simply because it's, uh, it's close to the, um, close to the interstate, which is typically where we, what we find. Um, and as far as the industrial and commercial uses, we, we quite honestly don't anticipate any industrial uses. Um, simply because the county does have their new industrial park up Community Road in Blackwood. And, um, you know, any large type manufacturing or, or distribution uses will, will likely gravitate towards that, given the incentives that they have to go into the industrial park. So even though we have the industrial classification, we don't anticipate that ever really even being a, a market use for the property. Uh, and then likewise on the commercial, since it is fifty-five acres, um, just, you know, in two thousand and five, uh, retail was abundant and shopping centers were going up everywhere. Um, we still would hope to have a nice grocery store, uh, on this particular portion of the PUD. But the reality is, is that we'll never fill fifty-five acres of land with commercial uses such as you'll see at the, like in the Village of Sand Hills or Kian Road or anything like that. That's just, it's not, i- i- it's just not something that's practical in this day and time.
So, which leads me to my next question, and that is, now, we're hypothetically, the, we allow for this mixed use to, to take place. Now you're saying that you have the other, um, industrial part that you don't really know what's going to happen with it because you don't think that it's, anything can go there and take off there. So by us doing, and, and this question is for you Gio, um, by, by us voting to move forward with this, does it allow for that, the part of the parcel that is industrial to, for them to be able to do something else with it?
I was, I was trying to look at, um, what was remaining, um, as I, as I read the proposal, and I may need to pull the actual file. So you have fifty-five point two acres that's designated for commercial and industrial use. And they're changing that to a mixed land use classification to allow both single-family and multifamily residential. Um, I guess for clarity, Mr. Waits may need to weigh in, but was the intent to allow the commercial and industrial to remain or to essentially replace the commercial industrial with residential?
Um, no Gio, the, the, uh, the idea was is that we, you know, we wouldn't fill up fifty-five acres with apartments either. Fifty-five acres is a pretty large tract of land and the apartments or three hundred units of residential will probably fit on somewhere between eighteen to twenty acres, which would leave thirty acres. So, yeah, the idea would be that we would have a, a quote, mixed use, truly a mixed use that we would have, say, twenty acres of, of multifamily being the apartments. And then, you know, ten, fifteen acres of a, a grocery store at some point. And then some, some ancillary fast food and other uses that would be interstate-related.
Okay, okay, that, that answers my question. Thank you, um, Mr. Waits.
Yes, ma'am.
And Gio, here's another question for you. I, um, I did speak to Mr. Green last week, uh, about the, um, the planning commission meeting and I'm, and I, please give me clarity, give me official clarity on the confusion with the numbers of, um, units to be built. Uh, I know that, uh, Mr. Green stated, I think there's roughly a hundred and eighty-eight, but somewhere in the paperwork, it's saying seven hundred and ninety-nine. That's a huge gap.
Yes, ma'am. The, the correct number is three hundred and ninety-nine. Um, and that's based on the forty-nine point nine eight acres, um, essentially being multiplied by eight, which is the density of the RM MD designation. So that number should be three ninety-nine, not seven ninety-nine.
Okay, and so, um, Mr. Green or, or Mr. Waits, um, you, the, the parcel of land can go up to three hundred and ninety-nine units, but you all are proposing one hundred and eighty-eight?
Um, Mrs. Barron, is that question directed at my case or is that for?
Oh, I'm sorry. I, I think I've gotten used to calling your name.
Okay, well, thank you, but.
So, um, no, that's, that would be, um, sorry, Mr. Green or Mr. Williams, I believe. Do we have either one of them available?
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Yeah, I, yeah, I, I can answer that question. Uh, uh, there was, you know, the, the confusion at planning commission, you know, that was resolved, obviously, in this meeting. But the reality of this, this property is, you know, e- even at three hundred and ninety-nine, uh, it's just cost prohibitive to even try to ob- obtain that amount of density. Uh, the, the plan that we're propos- we're proposing, uh, will strictly stay at a hundred and eighty-eight, give or take whatever units we may have to compromise, you know, once we move further into the process. Uh, the, you know, we did have a plan to utilize the rest of the site for possible trail systems and things of that sort, which was something that was brought up by one of the neighbors in the, uh, planning commission meeting. But, I mean, our, our intention is just strictly to stay with the density that we're proposing with this three point seven units to the acre, a hundred and eighty-eight unit.
Okay, a- and so here, so you don't have, or let me rephrase this. Do you have a plan for the remainder part of the property that's not being used? Because that's where I get a look, um, I, I get a lump in my throat. You start, you may start out at one eighty-eight, but because this property can, um, hold up to three hundred and ninety-nine, you know, two years later, um, we, we may see another hundred-plus homes popping up.
Well, that's a good, I, and I, and I understand your concern and, and, you know, Mr. Green and I have talked about that, you know, we, our, our proposal for this site is to create a subdivision plat for each townhome unit and to, uh, have the remaining open space be a common open space lot so that it can be built on in the future. Now, there is the ability, there, y- we could maximize this site, it's just the cost to do that doesn't make any sense in today's market. But, you know, we're strong about moving forward with just a hundred and eighty-eight units and keeping the remaining open space as open space and and, and maybe if, if, once we get through the site plan review process, if we can propose some sort of trail system, well, that's probably as far as we'll go.
Okay, a- and, and thank you for, for that response because I will say that, um, anyone who knows me knows that I'm very optimistic and I'm also a businesswoman, um, by profession. And I believe there are better days ahead in our economy and our market. Okay, so, um, the ideal is to, yeah, one eighty-eight right now, but three years from now, that economy is going to look real good and it's going, you're going to be able to get timber and wood and metal and all kind of things real quick. Right? Uh, so, and, and I, I say that in jest, I say it in jest, but, um, there also is a lot of reality to this. There, there's a lot of reality to, um, to something that has this big of a gap. And that is, um, several phone calls that I've taken, several, um, emails that I've answered about this particular rezoning. And, and so I did want to lift that up, um, that question up based upon the, the questions that I did receive. Um, tho- that's all of my questions, Bryant. I, I don't know if we've got any more, um, as I've asked my questions.
Um, so we actually have received one additional question. Um, I did want to make sure, um, any other participants that did have questions. Um, if you would raise your hand, um, our IT, um, department will be able to move you over to to ask that question if for some reason you did have an additional one. Um, I did have one more question addressed at, um, and this would be, um, one zero zero one Drew Wilson Boulevard. Um, and this question was, uh, the developer did not address the additional load on the current line. I believe this is referring to the sewer line and the question asked, can it handle it? Um, so I know, Mr. Green, uh, Mr. Williams, if y'all had any response to that question.
Well, we're, we're required to, to get capacity from the local purveyor. So, a- a- as far as we know, there's capacity to support this project.
Thank you, sir. All right, um, again, I'm, I open it one more time, just in case we have any additional questions. I don't see any additional ones at this point in time. Um, I, I do want to thank the public for, um, for hopping on and, and asking some, some questions um, about the future development, um, that's occurring in, in District Seven. Um, we ask you to continue to remain vigilant and engaged with your local government. Um, for opportunities like this, um, please share this with your neighbors and other community members and please stay connected with us. Um, as we do want to have the opportunity and gauge, gauge with you, uh, moving forward. Um, again, we do want to thank you for this time. Um, those that had questions were addressed, addressed to other issues or other things pertaining to, um, initiatives within the county, please know that we do have your information and that will be kept and utilized, um, at the appropriate manner. Um, so if you do have any other additional questions or concerns, uh, please make sure that you do shoot that information over to um, our Town Hall at RichlandCountySC.gov. Um, if you do have any additional questions moving forward, um, but Councilman Barron, I'll turn it over to you for closing remarks. But again, want to thank the public, um, and also want to thank, um, uh, thank Gio Price from our zoning office. Want to thank you as well, um, uh, Councilman Barron. Um, want to thank our PIO Office, IT, um, and the Clerk's Office for making all this possible.
And thank you, Bryant. You are excellent. Um, so i- it's always good to have, um, a, a fine staff member that is willing to step up and to tad along and even better when they live in District Seven. So, uh, thank you. And again, as Bryant said, thank you to all of our staff. Um, and I see our administrator is on. Thank you so much, sir, for joining us, um, this evening. As we close, I want to, um, really s- in where I started in that, I, I made a vow that we would, uh, have these conversations. And these are not always easy conversations to have. Um, but, uh, my mother says that a lot of what's wrong can be fixed by simply talking about it. And so as we talk about it, we want to, to lift up those difficult questions and with the hopes that, um, as people come. Uh, as people come to build in District Seven, that they understand that. We care about where we live and we care about who our neighbors are gonna be. We care about who we're gonna see, um, going up and down the roads. And as we build houses, we already know that as houses are being built. That's gonna put stress on our schools, it's gonna put stress on our parks and, you know, our infrastructure, all those things, we know that. And so because we know that, we will continue to have the conversations with our school boards and our superintendents. Um, our Parks and Recreation Commission and our local state delegation. We'll plan to work together. And I believe there are better days ahead, and even as there are better days ahead, we have to continue to talk about it. I want to encourage each one of you who are watching today or maybe watching in the replay. To follow Richland County um on all of our social media pages. Uh, sign up for our weekly review. There you're gonna find firsthand information about what's going on in Richland County. And um, they, our staff do a great job and getting information out there as we have more Town Hall meetings. Or as we have um events, we're planning a Christmas event for our children. So as we put that information out for our Christmas event for our children. Um, one, the best way to go is to to follow um our county pages on all things. Uh, Richland County, but um on all of our social media platforms and to uh like our YouTube page. We're live, we'll be live here tomorrow, um, hosting our meetings. We want to engage with you. We don't want to shy away from having conversations. We, we want to bring full transparency to what we're doing. In Richland County and continue to have conversation. Um, I thank you all for joining us today. And um, tune in tomorrow. We start our meetings tomorrow at two o'clock. We'd love to, love for you to join us virtually. Are in the building at twenty twenty Hampton Street. Until next time, guys be safe and have a good evening. Thank you.